All right, we are open and up for business. So, welcome to the special meeting of the Ferndale School Board, March 9th, 2021. First order of business is to recite the pledge. So if you'll join me, please, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, I have to ask you, am I still on the Zoom meeting?
Your forehead is.
Because I, my computer again seriously just blipped out.
Yeah, we can see and hear you.
Okay, I cannot see any of you.
Okay.
But Kelly is here and she knows what to do. Yes. I'm going to be applying for a special technical position with the school board when I retire, just to help with remote learning. So, so the next item is the adoption of the agenda. And since tonight's meeting has only one agenda item, that should probably be a pretty easy decision. So at this time, I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as written.
I can move to adopt the agenda as written.
All right, it's been moved to adopt the agenda as written. All those in favor say aye, aye. Anyone opposed? All right, the motion carries. So the only topic on our agenda tonight is to discuss the process we will use for selecting the new superintendent. Dr. Quinn has let us know that she intends to retire either at the conclusion of her current contract year, which is June 30th, 2021, or within a few months after that, depending on the decisions that we make. As allowable under the Open Public Meetings Act, Dr. Quinn informed us of her pending retirement during an executive session scheduled for the purpose of reviewing her performance and contract. However, the board is not allowed to make any decisions or take any actions during an executive session. Therefore, we've called this special meeting to talk about how we want to move forward with selecting a replacement. Upon learning of Dr. Quinn's decision, I had a conversation with Larry Francois, who is the superintendent of the Northwest Educational Service District, to learn about the special superintendent, the typical rather superintendent search process. Leanne had a similar conversation with Tim Garchow, the executive director of the Washington State School Directors Association. And from these conversations, we have determined that there are two options that we can pursue that are, I guess, the most straightforward. We can hire a search firm as soon as possible, conduct a full-blown search to select and hire a new superintendent between now and June 30th, which is a date when most educational administrators are free to move into new positions. Or, we can appoint or hire an interim superintendent for the 2021, I'm sorry, the 2021-22 school year and take a more measured, less rushed approach to find a new superintendent. And then he or she would begin their tenure with the Ferndale School Districts in the summer of 2022. If we choose the second option, Dr. Quinn has agreed to stay in her role through the summer if we want her to do so. Since she still has one more year on her three-year contract, we would not have to renegotiate or make any changes for that to happen. So I know my fellow board members have had time to think about these two options. And so I'd like to open the floor up for discussion of the pros and cons of each. Well, I'll throw out my thought. I, I, my personal thought is that to pull this off between now and June 30th would be fairly difficult, I think. The steps that we would have to follow, or we will follow if we decide to do this, and it's just, again, my opinion. We would have to put out an RFP, a request for proposal, for search firms. For a district like ours, we would use a search firm. Once we get the responses from the RFP, we would have to evaluate the firms, make a choice of a firm, meet with the firm, then develop the criteria that we have for the new superintendent, develop an ad, place an ad, let the ad run for several weeks, then vet the client, vet the applicants rather, then start an interview process and try to do that, including members of our community before the end of June. And I feel like there, there are too many pieces that require multiple weeks of time to be able to pull that off. Again, that's, that's my thought. So I'm personally in favor of taking on the task of either appointing or hiring an interim superintendent and then moving forward with a more measured search after we get through summer and, and once we start back into the fall. And I think we'll get a broader applicant pool as well. So.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Linda, when you, um, when you were hired, when, and Leanne, you could also answer this, when did that process start?
January. I was on the board at the time.
I, I was actually officially hired on March 3rd.
Okay. So from January until March 3rd, it was a the time from when you guys started to when there was hiring.
Yes. And I will say, as a board, we, the superintendent, Roger had made us aware in November, but he wanted to wait till January to announce it. It's that process, while I'm thrilled with how it ended up, felt somewhat rushed to me, even with that timeframe. The, the firm we had did a nice job in the beginning of talking with community about what we were looking for, talking with teachers, talking with administrators. My recollection of it is that they did a nice job on that end of it. But when it came, and they did a fine job helping us vet all the applicants, and they did a fine job of the initial interviews. But when it came time to being down to the last two, they, I felt like it was very rushed. And there wasn't adequate time or adequate opportunity for staff, administrators, and community members to interact with the candidates. Again, I think we ended up with the right one. However, I think having stretched that out another couple of weeks would have been the right thing to do. There's quite a bit of anger around that last step. So I guess, all that to say, I think what Andrew's saying makes sense to me because I have a hard time figuring out that timeline and layering it with COVID that we would have the opportunity for the community to really engage in the process. And hopefully, we're all getting vaccinated. And by next fall, winter, spring, early spring, we could do some face-to-face community events where we could have the person in here, the people here in person versus on Zoom.
There's also, within our ESD, if I've got this right, 11 of 35 superintendencies are in a state of flux this year, are being filled. You know, people are leaving, moving, and jobs are opening up. So there's quite a bit of activity going on right now with a focus on June 30th. And I feel like it's going to possibly detract from our, our position because there are so many positions that people are vying for.
Do we know what, what is a typical year? Because that's almost a third of the superintendents in this ESD. What is a typical year turnover?
Um.
Don't know.
Half that.
And if it's a third this year, hopefully next year, it would be, it would probably be even less than a sixth.
I think last year there were four.
Okay.
And maybe the year before, maybe five. So it's a big number.
I, I have not made up my mind, but to put something in the pro column of why maybe to do it this year. And there's a lot of up in the air stuff about this as well. Our two most senior board members, Leanne and Andrew, are both up for reelection this year. And I don't know what their decisions are, or what other people in the community's decisions are, but potentially having a very new board making such a decision like this without the wisdom of Andrew and Leanne, or both of them, that makes me a little nervous. But then again, you know, that's a lot of stuff up in the air on that one.
I know though, Melinda, you will have a lot of community wisdom because we had a lot of community wisdom in the process before, just not quite the way I would have liked to have had it happen. So even if Andrew and I are not here for whatever reason, you will have community input and you'll have a fabulous administrative team that will also help with input.
Other thoughts?
I would like to hear Leanne talk about her conversation with, she had with a gentleman about this.
Um, so Tim Garchow said that, and this was back a few weeks, he said it's doable, he said, but he's finding communities are unhappy with those that are in the process, and those communities have been in the process for a while. So it is a struggle, even with the more time, to have community engagement when everything is set up by, with Zoom. So he said it was doable, but he, you know, he's not going to tell me what to do one way or the other. He wasn't a huge fan of moving forward now.
Which is not to say that when we do do it, even if we can have meetings with everybody coming, we're still going to use technology, hopefully, like, you know, those Thursday afternoon Facebook Lives or Zooms or whatever, for people who would rather not come to something but would rather do it from their home. COVID silver lining.
I don't think we should rush. Myself, I feel like with the COVID and everything that we've been through all this year, that we need to step back and, I think, take it with caution. Now, you know, to make sure we go, Linda's got some shoes to fill. We got shoes to fill. And we want to make sure, you know, we're hitting all the right notes and get feedback from people and the community especially. Yeah, that's where I'm at.
And while Kevin wasn't on the board at the time, he was in the community, given his input and being part of the process. So short of being behind the desk with the rest of us, he was right there in the midst of it. So Kevin's got a lot of experience with it.
I also participated and, and watched some of those things too, but I think it's a lot different when the one job of the, this, the school board is the employment of the superintendent. So it's just something that, you know. I think it should be noted.
Yeah, duly noted.
Yeah. Having, having that experience, you know, from both sides, from the community side, from the, the board side, I think is important in making a good decision. And, and I think that's probably a big pro to moving ahead. But I have trouble foreseeing the timeframe and making this big of a decision. I, I feel like it would be rushed and it would be difficult to get the community input, given our current restrictions as far as meetings and everything else. You know, you look at the impact and the the interaction that we had when we had the levy meetings, and having something like that would be really difficult. You know, given the current situation, granted, you know, we have no promises that we'll be able to get back to a meeting like that, you know, anytime soon, but being optimistic, hopefully, once vaccination becomes more widespread and, and that we would be able to have more of a in-person meeting, which I think would be important for the community to feel like they're heard, you know, because I don't want them to feel rushed. That, that's always a you know, it's, it's, it's an important position. It's an important role to fill. And, you know, as Jesse said, there's some big shoes to fill.
And I think we know, when we do start the advertising that we state that, you know, we don't want to be rushed and we want input. So the community feels they're included.
Yeah, and that's, yeah, go ahead, Leanne.
I was going to say, that's part of the job of the search firm, Jesse. So that's where we go through an, an RFA or RFP or whatever you call it for a search firm, and we vet the search firms, and they talk about what their process is. And we decide which one feels like the best fit. And then they take care of a lot of that that you, that you're speaking to.
Oh, good.
So if we were to get an interim for this next year, when would we do the RFPs for the search firms? When, when would we ideally start this process?
Well, I mean, I, I guess we could do an RFP in the spring. I mean, we don't have to wait until after the start of the next school year. We can do an RFP and then know that we've got someone in place for the year and then start our interviewing candidates in late summer or fall. So I mean, in theory, if, if we did the RFP in the spring, got everything in place for that, the recruitment advertisement, and then had our candidates vetted and be ready to interview, you could, you could know who the next superintendent is before any elections take place in November.
I'm not necessarily saying that because I don't know if we want to
No, I think that's
drag it through the entire year because then the interim superintendent, when they need to make decisions, I, I don't know all.
I think, Andrew, I think to, to put out an RFP and, and go through and carefully vet and pick your, there's a lot of things that, pick the search firm. And then the search firm starts, I think, would start maybe in September, actually talking to the community and the staff about what you want in a superintendent. And, and I think, I'm just going to tell you when superintendents start looking at ads. And it's usually starting around November, December, January. And so then, if you spent the fall really getting community input on what people are looking for, what the, you know, then you have a nice, long time to advertise and let, once you've made the profile of what you're looking for. And then generally superintendent interviews are starting in January, February. But people know that they've, I mean, Faye, what's the timeline been on La Conner? They put something out in November and it's, or no, they put something out in January and it's closing now.
They met with, they met with the community before winter break, I want to say, early December. And then it was the advertisement came out right prior to, like, the, right at winter break. And then applications do right around now.
And so, and that's a leisurely process, but I, I, I don't think you're going to have the most people looking in September and October. I think superintendent candidates start looking in November, December, you know, start getting their stuff ready. And that's why that idea of putting out the call before winter break, people can spend winter break if they want to get a, and that will give you a very nice timeline.
So can we see like a gap chart or a plan? How we're going to do this? Because I need to see like dates and times and whatever goes on down the road.
Well, once we make our decision, yeah, we could, we can pull something like that together, but until we decide which option we want to pursue, we really can't pull anything together.
Andrew, you've outlined sort of the process if we were to move forward with hiring a superintendent. What is our process? Do we have to go through the same sort of process with the RFP and the search firm for an interim? Or how does that differ?
No, I don't think we do. I don't think we have to use a search firm for that part if we don't want to. I mean, we, we have, I think, two options. One, we have within our district an operations policy or succession. And in that, actually, Mark Bebok is the person who could step in if Linda was no longer able to do the job. So there is that op, op, opportunity for us to discuss with Mark the possibility of him stepping into an interim role for a year. And then I, I think we would have an opportunity for, if that didn't pan out, then we could look for an interim. I think the, the, to me, the really positive part of having someone step in from, from within the district is that one, I don't want an interim who's going to come in and want to change things and, and necessarily be here for, you know, a year and make a lot of changes and then leave. That's, I don't think that's going to be good for the district because we want the superintendent who's going to be here to come in and make some changes. And that's not to say Mark or whomever was in that role couldn't make needed changes, but it wouldn't be a wholesale. I mean, there are horror stories of interims coming in and, and really turning a district upside down and then leaving, thinking that's what they're supposed to do, and that's what we don't want. So I think there are some benefits to having someone who can continue the work we're doing. The high schools being built. I mean, we have a lot of moving parts within our district that someone like Mark would be able to keep guiding us and, and taking us through those, those processes and get us to, you know, the summer of 2022. But again, my, my thoughts on that. But I don't think we would have to use a search firm if we wanted to actually advertise for a an interim superintendent. That we, we have an opportunity internally, so that's, that's something that we can talk about.
Well, and I think that it's very true in the sense of, you know, if we do go with an interim, we don't want somebody who's going to come in and there's been enough change in the last year that I don't know that we need, you know, we've got a good team in place. We've got good processes in place. Having somebody come in with an attitude of, I need to, you know, change this all up before somebody else comes in. I don't think that would be in the best interest of our district or the, the students or anybody for that matter. Yeah.
So we, there are, there are a couple of things that we can decide tonight unless there's more discussion that people want to have about interim versus going for a conducting a full search. And so I think at this point, I don't know how people are feeling. I, I'm thinking about just doing a consensus vote of, is there anyone who feels strongly that we should do a full search? Are there folks who are on board with having an interim for a year? And then conducting our search in the fall and, and winter? Are there some who aren't sure?
I will totally, I mean, if, if I'm in the minority and we decide to go forward, I, I can get behind that. Definitely.
Well, the, the thing is too, that, I mean, I'm so new to all of this. And with the way the levy went and with the, you know, bringing in this new school and then with the way the levy went again and, and the community having to go through all of that, I, they feel like, they feel like they somehow didn't have a choice or didn't have a voice. And I think we need to do this so they feel like they could, they have the buy-in. And feel comfortable with whoever we choose. Or they choose.
Well, if, if we, at, at least there's consensus-wise, four out of five who feel like doing a complete search at this point is not the direction for us to go on. Then talking about option two, we've got some opportunity there. I mean, we don't have to decide tonight who that interim will be. The board can charge me with meeting with Mark to discuss this further and talk about what the terms might look like and what that might be like. And then on March 30th, I can report back and we can decide at that point to either accept Mark as an interim or go a different route and then accept Linda's letter of retirement at that point.
Did we discuss the five of us, though? About, okay. This sounds very awkward. But wouldn't the five of us together discuss who we wanted as an interim or, because that sounds like more, you'll interview him, and then if he agrees, then we'll approve it?
And that's what I was wondering. Is there going to be other names interim?
Well, if we follow our succession plan, not really, no. I mean, if we want to adhere to our policy of succession, just as on an interim basis, it's not really designed as an interim, but it applies.
I don't know if it does apply though, because the succession, the way I thought with succession is if she couldn't do her job like as a sudden type of thing, I think.
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying. It, it wasn't designed for an interim position, but I think we can apply it as such. We, we, he's been vetted as the most likely person internally to step in and serve as superintendent if Linda's not here. So I, I don't think it's a difficult step to make to this.
I mean, I like Mark and everything. I do mark. But I think there's one step we're missing is that we don't, as a group, get to talk about, you know, this important decision is bringing in somebody for a year or whatever. So I mean, we got, you know, to toss names around.
Well, I'll have to ask Linda about this, since it's a personnel decision. Is that something that we are allowed to discuss in an executive session without making any decision about who some, who the interim might be?
Yes, you could do that.
It feels like we're appointing somebody already, whether you don't have a choice or not. So I, like I said, I like your mark, but I don't think there's a, that step, that one step is missing.
I, I think it can be an executive session because it is a personnel.
It can be, it can be executive session.
I think that's what we need to do myself.
And did we advertise an executive session meeting on this meeting or?
No.
Okay, then we'd have to do it, we could do it before the next meeting.
There was another date that you were all available. I don't remember, Kelly told me. If you're all still available, it could be an executive session prior to the March 30th meeting. Or, or it can be an executive session prior to the March 30th meeting. You can also do that.
The day of.
Yeah, the day of. I mean, the hour before or something. You know, that's another option.
Yeah, I'm open anytime.
I, I'm thinking it would be great if Andrew could talk with Mark. And then I think having an executive session sooner rather than later, not wait till the end of the month.
I would agree.
So everybody can be thinking about it and we can, we can vet our options.
Right.
Ourselves.
I would agree with, I would agree with that. So we have some I would agree with, I would agree with that, so we have some time to, to think about it. I mean, because it's, you know, one thing, bringing in somebody who's already in a position like that, it would be a whole different process. Getting somebody from, you know, outsider that's not as familiar with it. So it does become a, a major decision, I mean, as far as, you know.
I, I would, I would just remind you, I agree with Melinda, that policy OE2 wasn't written for this particular situation. But the rationale for the selection is similar. It is Mark's role as assistant superintendent makes him the logical next step in line. The fact that he does not want to be the superintendent at all, even interim particularly. Because one of the things you said before was that you didn't want to give someone a fair, an unfair advantage who might become a candidate for the job. Because the community would look, you know, if you put someone in there who wanted to be a candidate and then they applied and got it, it would look like you appointed them without, you know.
I don't think that's true. I think that's, you know, if that's, if that's what happens, that's what happens. But I think if you put somebody in there as interim and they do are lucky enough to get the position, then that's on them, that's nothing.
I'm just saying, Jesse, what your colleague said before is that you would prefer not to give someone a leg up who would be a actual candidate. And then
I don't think that's fair myself.
Okay, well, I'm just
Because any, everybody has a choice if they want to put their name in. I'm just speaking from my experience from other jobs. And I'm thinking that, you know, if anybody wants to be interim, they could do that. And then if they get chosen to be the person, then that's good. They have the experience. That's not given for more, whatever.
I certainly understand what you're saying. I think our goal in this process is to have someone come in who can run a district. We don't want to bring in an interim who really hasn't done this level of work for.
But we have 11 out of 35 superintendents that are retiring in the ESD.
That's the thing, I think we need that executive session for it because we have to feel like we're, we have a part of it too. It feels like right now that we're being told who's the interim. And we don't have a choice. My thing is, you know, there might be other people that, other people though, that do have good experience that might get the position too. And, and then having them having the leg up, it doesn't matter if they do or not. That's okay, that's good even. I don't know.
And part of it, if I'm making, if I'm making that sense. If we do have a full search next year and we have a full search that community is involved with, et cetera. And the interim was somebody who was a candidate as well for that. I think it, it does go into like an equal, equal opportunity. And you know, if you want to put your name in the hat, you can put your name in the hat. And for us to say ahead of the time, I mean, nobody's going to get special treatment with it if they were the interim or not. They're all going to be vetted with that search that we do. And like Jesse's saying, if the interim happened to end up to be the full, the superintendent in the end, the best person got it. But that's, there's a whole lot of things have to happen before we get to that sort of situation.
Yeah.
I have to tell you, if we have an interim in place who is also a candidate, there is a potential that people looking in at Ferndale are going to say, oh, well, they're, they're already, that person's applying, that, that's an interim who's actually going to be the superintendent, I'm not going to waste my.
It may not be the truth though, it might not be the truth.
Yeah, but people will say all sorts of things. I mean, really, people are going to make up whatever story narrative they want to hear.
It, it's true that they're going to make up whatever story they want, but given the, the trust issues have been with the board, I think it's important that we, we think about those things and the perception of, of what it's going to be as well. Plus, you know, making sure we have somebody that comes in. The, the one bonus with Mark, you know, if that's the direction we go is he knows the, what's going on within the district from that level and is aware of those things. Because that's going to be important for the transition too, I think.
The thing is, I, oh, well, I got to get this off. If they're if they're qualified and that person knows about being a superintendent, maybe it's another superintendent coming in. If they know the superintendent job and then why can't we give that person the opportunity to do that also? And if they've become the first person to become the superintendent, that's all right, because that's the best person you want in there. If that, it's, if it's a second person we like, then that's okay too. That's the best person we want in there. But I think, you know, right now, just staying interim is, and that's it. That's not, seems like it's not fair to me. And I'm thinking out of the box because I've been in director's positions before. And I've seen this happen many times. Then, you know, there's people have favorites, favorites and more favorites or cousins or uncles or whatever. And they hired them and they don't, don't give anybody else a chance. Now that's why I don't think it's fair.
Let's, let's step back a second. And we talked about the fact that we had the OE2 in place. And we could apply it going forward or we can do a search for an interim superintendent. I don't think anyone is trying to shove anyone into anything. And I think Mark would be the first one to say, great. But he's very willing because he is dedicated to the district. And so that's why, and he's already in our policy. So that's why he is someone that we've talked about. If we want to discuss the other option after we've talked with Mark about the possibility of him doing it, then I think one, we need to have the meeting sooner than later because we're, we're moving on and Linda needs to make her plans. And so I, I think that that's something we can do.
Could we have an executive session before you talk to Mark?
Sure.
I would.
We, we can have an executive session and talk about, but we can't make any decisions. We can just talk about personnel related.
Yeah.
I guess issue, not issues like.
We, we can't make a decision, but we can make any suggestions.
If we want to make a decision, we had, go back into a public meeting, someone makes a motion and we vote on it. But we can discuss the rationale of what we want to do. But we can't make a decision in executives, in the executive session. That has to be a public decision. So Kelly, do you recall the second date that we had that was available?
March 16th, next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday. Is everyone still available for next Tuesday?
Yes.
I'm going to have to check my schedule real quick.
So, and again, I, I'm, I'm just going to, for my two cents worth, I think if we, we've decided to go with an interim, one of the things that we really should be thinking about is what we'll make for the smoothest transition while we do our search for a permanent superintendent. And, you know, everybody is entitled and we will listen to all thoughts and opinions at our executive session. But the underwriting goal for me is to have someone in that role who knows Ferndale, can help direct us as we're building a school and going through COVID and working with our admin team. There's a huge benefit to having someone who knows us as an interim going forward. But again, I, it's not my decision, we'll make it as a board, but the interim role is not one that in my mind is an opportunity for someone to, to hone their skills. It's an opportunity for us to have someone in place who can lead the district and keep us on track. We've got a lot of moving parts this next year. And then while that part is running smoothly, we as a board can really focus on finding the permanent superintendent with the community. So that's my thoughts on that.
And I think people, districts pull in interims for a variety of reasons. And ours isn't because we're a mess. We have an administrative team that works really well together. So, and we have a policy governance model that's also not the norm. And it's not, I, I agree with Andrew, we don't, we're not looking for someone to come in and make a bunch of changes. We're looking for someone to come in and help us through COVID and keep us moving forward.
Yeah.
But as a support, can't we say that when we are, you know, looking for somebody, that we are looking for somebody to just keep the boat steady for a year? We're not looking for changes. I mean, don't we kind of set the expectations for the superintendent when we hire them, the interim?
We absolutely would lay out what it is we're looking for.
Yeah, I always, I always like to err on the side of the known rather than the unknown. But again, we'll have our executive meeting next Tuesday night at seven. And we'll continue our discussion at that point. Before we adjourn though, since Linda has announced her retirement, I would like to thank Linda for the past 12 plus years of leadership that she's provided. We have gone through so many changes and so many hard times, starting with the recession and moving through all of those things. You've led us with, with skill and I think with a, a lot of heart and a lot of knowledge. And we are very grateful for, for your leadership at our district. So thank you. And we'll have more to say because we'll have to celebrate you at some other point where we can possibly get together. But in, in light of the announcement and stuff, I do want to thank you for what you've brought to the district and for the way you've cared for our students and our community. So thank you.
Thank you. It's really been an honor.
So as I said when we began, we only had one topic to discuss this evening. We've now reached the end of the agenda. As a board, our consensus was that we would move towards utilizing an interim superintendent for the next year. So that we can do a, a more measured search for a permanent superintendent. And we will meet again next Tuesday night in executive session to further discuss that topic. No decisions will be made in that meeting, but we'll meet as, in the executive session to further that discussion. So with that, I will adjourn the meeting and say that we will see each other again next Tuesday night. Thank you.